How we provide services for our community. As you consider this presentation and the information that I've left here tonight that others in the audience are welcome to receive, I hope that at some point in a future meeting you might consider an action that the council could take on some statement of support for the next era of excellence and the continued growth of our community. That is, the future of healthcare in Pullman, and what could it look like? What are the possibilities? We have wonderful services now, we have great physicians and nurses and committed volunteers and the support of the community in creating a wonderful environment. But what could it be like in the future? What are the possibilities? And when we talk about that, it's important to remember that there's a lot of things good about the American healthcare system. People from all over the world continue to come to America for specialized care, special surgical care, cancer treatment, other important aspects of care that they can't access or are sure that the best care available is in America. And we want to build on that. We don't necessarily want to set it aside and try to replace it because that served us well, but it seems to have left out some of the things that could be equally important and even long-term more beneficial. And so, how do we take the somewhat fragmented nature of our system and make it a more guided experience to bring in those social services components that to complement our great capacity in acute care services and episodic care when things go wrong and illness arises that we didn't anticipate? How can we make it so that attending to health and preventing illness is a part of the business plan in healthcare? Right now, healthcare is mostly episodic, and we only access healthcare when there's a recognized problem. And we don't, the business model doesn't allow as much attention to helping people understand how to stay well, providing support resources to help them prevent disease and illness and accident going forward. And so, how do we change that as part of our pathway to the future? We also want to account for community growth. Healthcare is one of those infrastructure elements, just like fire and safety and law enforcement and quality education. Healthcare falls in that same category, and with expanding population, we want to have the capacity to continue to meet the needs and move beyond what we're doing today to be able to provide similar excellence of care for those that will be new to our community. And finally, we have a unique partnership with the community that has been a source of strength, recognizable commitment on the part of the community overall, whether that's through fundraising or formal bond issues to support the hospital and the services we provide, and we think that's a part that can continue to strengthen our ability to provide quality services in the future. As we've considered this prospect in our innovation summit last fall, we got input from the community. We had about 175 people there, and it was an interactive program, and we asked people for their opinions and their ideas about healthcare and what had been good about their previous experiences, what hadn't gone so well, what did they find were some of the barriers to effective healthcare, and how could they imagine what it could be like? What were some ideal characteristics that they wanted to express? And as we pulled that all together in this word cloud, we were able to pull out those things that seemed to start to paint a picture of what the community saw as important aspects of the next era of excellence. Certainly, care coordination and reducing that fragmentation was right in the center, the most frequently mentioned aspect of what an ideal experience could be like. The way to connect the dots for people, helping them not have to navigate the healthcare experience without the guidance of someone who's knowledgeable and knows how to make the right connections for effective comprehensive care. It also talked about accessibility of services, not only that they're available here, but there's a chance that you can be seen by the physician, so the capacity of those who are providing care needs to be sufficient to meet the needs of the community. The role of information, just as care is often fragmented, our information systems often continue that disjointed aspect of our care, with some of our information in one place and other parts of our healthcare information in another place. How can that all be brought into part of the care coordination arena of how we organize care? People also recognize that while we may get standardized in some regards, we may be more technologically aware of how we organize information, nobody wants to lose the personalized touch that's available in Pullman and is a hallmark of their experience, so we want to make sure we stay attentive to that. People recognize if we're going to do care coordination, then we're going to need more coordinators of care, and being able to bring that capacity up to the needs of the community will be an important part of how we address the next era of excellence. And then finally, the continuity of care was recognized as something that if there are going to be interruptions, if gaps are going to be known, how do we plan for those and make sure that there's a plan for continuity as care continues on in the future? As we received this feedback and the board of commissioners considered it in their examinations and considerations for the future, they realized and we observed that these are many of the same things that we've been considering for the last several years as we've contemplated the future and tried to anticipate where we might go. These began to represent the thoughts that we had been developing, and it occurred to us that it was time to present a plan to the community with a proposal that could help us move in this direction and accomplish these things that had been identified as important for the next era of excellence. So, when we talk about excellence and what we can see in the future, there are four parts to the plan and the proposal that we're sharing with the community and asking them to consider. The first one is to create this coordinated care experience. We call it one-stop care, where you can come and in a single visit maybe receive multiple aspects of care at one time, so that it's integrated and comprehensive and not fragmented and disjointed over a period of time. In order to do that, the prospect of a community-wide personal electronic health record becomes a centerpiece of the next era of excellence and care coordination. Having your information in a single location where all those who are involved in providing your care can access the most recent information about your care and your status and then update it so that those who will continue your care also are aware of your current health circumstances. This, of course, would be secure access, secure storage, as secure as it's possible to make it with the technology and the things we know today and will continue to evolve in the future. Centralized scheduling becomes a part of how that can be an important aspect of creating this one-stop-care experience. In addition to information and having that be centralized and comprehensive, location of providers becomes another aspect of care coordination. How do we have providers, physicians, therapists, nutritionists, pharmacists, all the parts of this team environment of providing care, how do they be located in a single location on the campus so that your one-stop visit can truly be to one place at one time for multiple reasons of your care? We look at suites of services. It might be possible where you can actually have standardized approaches for chronic illnesses or approach to wellness and prevention of disease where you set those in place and so you know that if you're a diabetic or congestive heart failure patient, there's going to be a similar amount of care that you're going to receive every year. And then we customize that to recognize the unique needs of each individual and how we respond to those as part of the next era of excellence. And finally, care coordinators will have to expand. We found in our trials around care coordination that nurses and social workers provide the best type of care coordination for patients and their families. Often from different perspectives, nurses' office often understand and can coordinate the more clinical aspects of care, whereas the social workers can bring in that social component, which is equally important to create a complete package for the support and guidance that people need to achieve their optimal health. As we think of what a coordinated care experience could look like, we created this little diagram to kind of point out the steps along the way. And so, when you recognize that it's time for an annual visit or some changes occurred in your health, instead of calling a scheduling person or a receptionist, you might call a care coordinator. And that person asks you a few questions about your health status. They've got access to your record right there that has a comprehensive awareness and compiled information about your health and the things that you've been working through in the recent past. And then they can organize a visit for you that would be more attuned to all of your needs rather than just coming and checking with the physician who then says, "Well, we're going to need to have you go get this test and have this study and go have you see the nutritionist." That can all be organized in a single visit. Sometimes maybe you'll even find that logistics that contribute to your challenges in the care you receive are childcare needs, or maybe you're a caregiver for an aging adult or an infirm adult in your home, and how can that be a part of your one-stop-care experience that right on the campus of the Pullman Care Community, you have drop-off daycare and adult day health services to help manage that part of your visit? We've concluded and the things we've looked at is that distance is not the challenge in Pullman and our surrounding region, it's the time that's available to us. Most of us have busy lives, we have multiple things, we're trying to balance and include in our daily and weekly schedules, so being able to have one day where you know you've accomplished multiple things becomes an efficient use of time for all of us. And when that includes care for loved ones in your home, then that just removes one more logistic out of the things you need to plan. So, you arrive on the day of your appointment, you go to your physician, you might see a specialist on the same day, maybe you talk with a nutritionist, maybe you see a mental health provider to help you with other challenges that you're facing, and you then meet with the financial counselor after you've seen and received all your care. And they talk to you about what insurance is going to provide and cover, what your responsibility might be, and you leave the visit at that point knowing what the financial responsibility you may have is. You touch base again with the care coordinator, you go over what you learned that day, you look at the plan that's been developed, and then you move forward, and that care coordinator stays with you to be a resource, a guide, someone who can help organize other aspects of your care as you continue forward. Now, we don't know if this is exactly how it would work when we get down to designing it, but it provides a picture of what's possible and how it might be different than what most of us experience today. The second part of the next era of excellence is space. We talked about being able to have providers in a single location. In order to do that, the hospital's seen great success in the 14 years we've been on Bishop Boulevard, and so we need additional space in order to accomplish and meet the needs of the community and bring to reality the concepts in the next era of excellence. So, Community Health Pavilion becomes that location. It's a three-story addition to the campus, 45,000 square feet. We call it a pavilion because at least one definition is that's a collection of buildings, either attached or separate, that form a hospital. But more importantly, we recognize that hospitals play a unique role in the community, that they can be a place of refuge, they can be a place of safety, they can be a place where the community feels like they can have confidence and trust that they'll be cared for and that their welfare will be considered. So, under that definition, we embrace the idea of a community pavilion as an addition to the Pullman Care Community. In that, we'd see additional physicians brought on, we'd see expansion of our Center for Women's and Children's Health, we'd see therapists and pharmacists and mental health providers and speech therapists and physical therapists, along with physicians organized in a team environment. It'd give us the opportunity to redesign how space is organized to facilitate a team experience for patients in a one-stop-care setting. We don't want to forget internists and pulmonologists and cardiologists, for those of us that are seeing the other end of the H-spectrum these days, and make sure that they're a part of that integrated team to provide a one-stop-care experience for everyone in the community. Medical fitness, a service that's physician-prescribed that gives you the opportunity to understand within the context of any illness or limitations you may have on your health, how can you still achieve an optimal level of fitness? With an organized, professionally-developed plan of fitness and exercise, nutrition, and other behavioral activities for your daily life, as well as continued space and expanded space for wellness and fitness education activities, which are kind of the fundamental part of sustaining wellness and moving in a direction of prevention of illness and disease. As you look at the rendering here, you'll see that it's a three-story building, as I mentioned. This is a view from on the corner of Bishop Boulevard and Fairmont Drive, Fairmont Road, just across the street is Zepo's. And you'll see the white shaded areas are the existing buildings, and so it's the colored part that would be the addition. The other perspective is if you're standing in the parking lot of Walmart looking east to Moscow, it's the same, the white shaded areas are the existing building and the round atrium area along with the additional building on the north end there would be the Community Health Pavilion that we're proposing. This rendering was never intended to present a plan for parking, and we know in Pullman parking is a constant area of attention and some concern. We know that we'll have to use multiple approaches to adequately address access to the campus and to the facilities. Additional parking is one of them. It won't be a structured parking, it'll be surface parking. But other things are redesignating, shifting around who parks where, making sure patients and visitors park the closest to the facilities, and staff and physicians hike a little farther, part of the wellness program of the hospital, so it's a good thing. So, whether it's valet services or assistive support at the entrances to get folks who are coming with a walker or coming with a wheelchair, and the companion has to go park the car, that they can get assistance into their appointment and to where they need to go, and then their companion can join them later. So, we recognize the importance of it, we know that there are options that we have to effectively address the parking needs that this addition will bring. The third part of the next era of excellence is upgrading services within the hospital, most especially three services that we've seen continued growth in. Over the last few years, we've expanded the surgical capacity at the hospital because of growth. We are currently expanding same-day services to respond to the same growth dynamics that we've been experiencing. And so, Orthopedic Center of Excellence has been also demonstrating significant growth in the last several years, as well as two outpatient services in imaging and pulmonary and cardiac rehab and pulmonary services, sleep medicine and pulmonary function testing and other types of services. So, if you look at this diagram of the floor plan of the hospital, up in the upper portion of the diagram, you'll see the square footprint, that's the office building that has physician offices in it. The upper left-hand corner is where the in-orthopedic practice currently resides in half that space, so that little square, and that needs to be expanded. They've added physicians, they're continuing to recruit for additional specialties in orthopedics, and so we need to expand to take up that whole side of that office space to accommodate the needs, the growing needs of our orthopedic service here in the community. So, that's the one part of upgrading services and activities in the hospital. Here in the middle, you see the several hashed spaces along with the, on the right side, you see a dark green-colored space. Those are the imaging, pulmonary, cardio services, and our laboratory. And those services, do I have a thing on here? Is that it? I don't know, I'm not going to try and figure it out. All right. But our plan is, we're seeing growth in imaging, we're seeing growth in cardio and pulmonary services, and I mentioned down in the very lower middle part, you see a new square space that's being under construction, that's the addition of the same-day services space. The same-day services will occupy the ground floor, but the second floor is vacant. And so, we see an opportunity to move our laboratory, the dark green-shaded area there more in the middle of the diagram, up to the second floor, that dark brown section there at the bottom of the diagram. The reason we see that as a possibility is because patients don't go to the laboratory. They go to the drawing station to have their blood drawn or to provide a specimen, but it's the specimen that goes into the laboratory, patients don't go in there. So, the processing of the laboratory work can be done in a variety of locations. So, in order to keep patients from moving throughout the hospital and trying to navigate different places, we would make sure the drawing station stays exactly where it is. So, it's right in that central area for registration for those same three outpatient services. And then with the laboratory moved to a new location, we'd be able to expand imaging, expand cardio services, expand pulmonary services, as well as being able to move into this other space for orthopedics, provide ample space for them to expand their capabilities and serving the needs of the community. So, that's the third part of the next era of excellence is expansion and upgrade of hospital services. Finally, the fourth part is upgrading and expanding medical technology. Technology plays a key role in the provision of healthcare in our community and almost any community in America, and it's continually advancing. And as we've made investments in expanded space over the last few years, we've kind of held back on some of our technology upgrades to just make sure we have adequate resources to meet other needs, to serve the community. So, as we've recognized that we have about $3 million to $4 million a year that have needs and requests, we're able to fund about $1 million and a half to $2 million of that each year. And so, you gradually get a little farther behind being at the point in the curve you want to be. So, part of our proposal is additional funding to help us take a couple giant steps to get us closer to that level of funding in a shorter period of time rather than the protracted time it might take to just do it on our own. This list that you see before you is just an example. That's a dynamic set of needs, changes every year, but it gives you an idea of the sorts of upgrades that we're looking at in the next several years to keep us at the forefront of technology. When you take the next era of excellence and its four parts, it breaks down in costs this way. The centralized electronic personal health record is a $10 million investment. The Community Health Pavilion and the space to bring providers together is a $20 million investment. Expanding and upgrading hospital services and space is a $5 million investment, and the upgrade of medical technology is a $5 million investment for a project total of $40 million. Our funding plan has two parts. The major part is before the community now and will be voted on in the month of April. The actual election date is April 23rd, but with mail-in ballots in Washington State, those ballots will begin arriving in voters' homes around April 5th. You're eligible to vote on this proposed bond issue if you're a registered voter and a resident of the city of Pullman. The city of Pullman's boundaries and the hospital district boundaries are the same, and we appreciate the efforts of the city to assure that continuity going forward as those who request annexation into the city are also requested or required to request annexation into the hospital district. And that avoids pockets of the community that are in the city but not in the hospital district, which we had when I first came here and we were able to kind of clean that up. So, that bond levy is for $29 million, which is 99 cents per thousand dollars of assessed property value for homeowners in the city of Pullman. There is a current levy that will be paid off in 2021, and next year will be the last year that we will assess taxes for that levy. So, next year, the last year of the current levy would be the first year of the new levy if it passes. And in that year, we would also only assess 99 cents per thousand at the most in order to collect the final part of the current bond and begin the collection of taxes on the new bond. So, passage of the new bond will result in an increase of about $167 per taxpayer for a home that has an assessed value of about $250,000, but it will not result in the full $250 increase for the taxpayer. Finally, the remaining $11 million will be raised by the foundation's efforts and their work out in the rural communities to go beyond the district boundaries, to invite those who will also benefit from the hospital to be a part of supporting this expansion and this growth for the community as well as hospital resources. So, as you continue to be aware of, we invite you to remain informed about the next era of excellence through our website, a lot of resources there and updated information. You can sign up for a newsletter on the next era of excellence that would come to your email box about twice a month, which also gives you updates. So, I thank you for your time, appreciate the support we continue to receive from the city and all the...
Any questions or comments? Means you've answered your questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Congress, we asked if we might have a resolution to endorse this bond issue.
Yes.
Which can come in a later talk. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Scott. I was looking for Keegan Otter from ASWSU. I don't see him in the audience here tonight. Does anybody else from ASWSU going to be here for the Roar Program? Are you with the Roar Program? Oh, super, okay. Didn't know if Keegan was going to do the introduction or not, so...
Good afternoon and good afternoon, everybody. My name is Brenda Barrio, and I am the co-founder of the WC Roar Program, and I'm an assistant professor of special education at Washington State University. And this is my colleague, Tom Faelash, he's the director of the new WC Roar City Council members for having us here, and thank you Mayor Johnson. So, very quickly, the WC Roar Program is a... ... and developmental disabilities at WSU. This is a very unique program as it provides access to college experiences, career development, and individualized programming for students that traditionally cannot attend college. So, after graduating from high school, the majority of these students go home or perhaps are able to secure some jobs, but not pursue a career that they truly want to do it. So, we have been working on this and building an infrastructure for the past four to five years, but we were able to secure funding over the past year and got the green line almost a year ago. So, as of yesterday was a year ago. And of course, we want to provide the Coog family experience that we know is very unique. So, WC Roar is the first one in the northwest of its kind at a four-year college and the seventh one in the country. Specifically, we really want to focus on, again, providing that college experience to enhance the career and independent living for students with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Some of the eligibility requirements, as I was talking about, are really focusing on students who traditionally cannot enter a four-year college or a two-year college, either due to the lack of requirements based on high school graduation, so not having the four-year of English or science or mathematics due to their disability because they were in special education. Also, making sure that they want to pursue a career and go to college is a big part of our program. and go to college is a big part of our program. And most importantly, that they want to live communally, be independent, and of course, want to have that college experience in general. So our program activities consist of what we call 75% fully inclusive. That means that they are in the community. They're in the WSU campus, and they have experiences very traditionally as the rest of our students. This consists of auditing courses depending on their career of choice. We have students currently that are taking animal science, for example, sports management classes, as well as photography or marketing. And then to match those experiences in the classroom, we also have them intern in throughout many different areas within WSU or in the Pullman community. For example, we have one student here that is in the WSU Vet Med Teaching Hospital in the equine unit, and her career and focus is to work in a veterinarian hospital. Also, in addition to that, we have students who are traditional students, but also want to be part as allies to our students. So not tutors, not mentors, but build relationships that are very genuine, just like many of us have friendships from college. So we call those peer allies, and we set them up by making sure that they not only understand who our population are, but for them to take the relationship or whether it's as a classmate acquaintance or a friendship beyond that. And then finally, because we know that our students may need a little extra support, we provide some workshops through our Roar program that consists of financial literacy, life skills, or career and financial planning. So this is a sample schedule, and as you can see, it looks like a very traditional schedule for any WSU student, including having a PE class, in this case, bowling, because that is still part of PE and a lot of fun. But many of them actually go throughout their everyday, going to classes, going back to their apartments, hanging out with friends, and so on. Again, very traditional college experience. And as I was mentioning, the internships that we always try to provide are those that are really meaningful and go hand in hand with their courses of audit and their career of choice. So these are some of the ones that we currently have. We will continue to expand as we have recently admitted five new students. So our cohort will grow from four students this year because it was our pilot year to now expanding it to nine students for next year. We foresee that cohorts will begin growing of 10 students every year after that. And again, this is a two-year program in plans of becoming, hopefully, a four-year program in the near future. Tom?
Our students live in traditional housing in the Shidduk Village. And so they're required to live on campus. And again, they have roommates right now. We have four students. And next year, we'll have more. They will be spread out in the complex, so it's not going to be like one either to be like a veterinary sorority house. We'll spread them out so they have traditional housing with the non-traditional students and have that full-inclusive environment. So they right now are living in Shidduk. And we also have ALAs, adult living assistants, on campus for an extra help, extra set of eyes on campus. We have two of those that are hired, and we're looking for one more next year for a total of three as we have the nine students. Supports we have, so we have daily check-in. So outside the office, we have upstairs, we have a little lounge and things for them. So they come check-in. We do a little debrief, get their day going. We have an advisory staff, part of our graduate assistants. We do accommodations. We help professors to accommodate classes. We look at, we talked about this, assistant living advisors, someone to RAs and our day when we, most of us went to college. And we have an on-call emergency, so we have a Roar phone. So they have 24-hour access to one of us within, tell problem solver relate to that. We also get the employment guidance, so we do that within our staff. We also have natural supports, so we have that peer ally program. We have our colleagues and coworkers in all the other departments. And again, a big component we have, I think, is the peer ally program, which are our traditional students who are just friends on campus. They may go to coffee. They may go shopping. They may assist them and drive into Walmart over to Moscow for any needs they may have and doing those various things. So it's really a unique program. Have, we have 44 students right now who have voluntary stepped for us as we want to be part of your program. We want to help out in any way we can. And that's expanding as we speak. More people are coming forward, hearing about the program and wanting to be attached to our program and the students that we serve. Some things we can do. We don't do one-on-one servants. We don't do daily care. We don't do medications. We are not tutors. Mental health services, we have provided through our regular health services, the CAP program. And then we don't arrange any social interactions, but we do set up activities for them through our Roar program that we designed to go bowling or we might go to the Cubs for the movies or we do soccer pickup. And we invite our peer allies and have them enjoy to some of those different activities as students and staff are together to combine things they want to do. We want them to be the face. We want them to control what they do and the activities that they choose to want to do. So some are mandatory. We want them to do that. And some of them are voluntary because they have a full schedule. They're living a full life, a campus life, involved in one of the 300 clubs we might have on campus. So that makes it kind of a nice interaction for them with our non-disabled peers and friends they make on campus. Mission process, we open that every year around November 1st, and we close somewhere in the first week of January. And so we have a council made up of our colleagues and citizens in the community that form together, and we come and review all those applications. And we have some set criteria that we're looking for in those applications. And we want the candidates to be a good fit for us. But first of all, we want our program to be a good fit for them. It's a two-way street. So we're just not looking for that particular one student. We're looking for a nice mix of all students. They work together and work with staff and have that well-rounded look. We're looking, so they're testing for previous school experiences. We're looking at work experiences they may have had. We're taking input from parents, input from their reference letters and things, and putting that all together in a packet and then making that selection. They also all come to campus for personal hearing, those that are selected. And that also involves a student and also involves the parents. And sometimes their brothers and sisters tag along to give us the real information. So it's a well-rounded look at a student to make sure we are that good fit for them as well as they are a good fit for us. And that's, I think that's important for us to know and everyone here to know as we put our program together.
So one of the things that we have been really focusing on has been that access piece and that equitable piece. So the community has actually been very, very giving into the Roar program. Specifically, this is how we started. We have been trying to gather grants federally, statewide, and so on. And unfortunately, because this is so new, it's very innovative, there hasn't been very, very much luck. But the community has stepped up all around the state of Washington and beyond, and we actually got it funded. So thanks to many donors, whether it is large amounts, like our new, we just received a legacy gift for $600,000 a couple of days ago. And so we have been very lucky to also have those of us who may not have that much money to put in a little bit every month from our paychecks. So it is truly a wonderful community focus. And this is how many of our students are getting funded currently. So the way that WSU was also very kind to help us set this up is to have a financial cost that does not go beyond the traditional student cost. So we're actually a little bit under. And one of the things that we try to do is in order to be self-sustaining, is have a program fee. So instead of having tuition, then they pay a program fee specifically to us. And so in year three, we hope to be self-sustaining, whether that is without donor funding. So specifically with just those WSU Roar fees. So we hope to continue to grow. But just as you see here, all the traditional university fees, transportation, you know, Cub fee, technology fee, they're all the same because we want to make sure that our students are also WSU students and they have access to the rest of the campus like every other student would be. Some outcomes, and this is where the big impact, that is not just for our four students or nine students coming in or the rest of our students in the future may have. Yes, we, similar programs have found that about 44% to 68% of their graduates are able to obtain a full-paying job after they complete the program in comparison to 14% nationwide. And this is people with disabilities in general. But more specifically, the impact goes beyond that and goes to really to the community, not just the WSU, but here in Pullman. We are seeing a new employer stepping up and really getting to understand what it is to work with individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, which are opening now doors to students in high school or even the adults in the community. But also those of us who are faculty members or teachers, their neighbors, to really try to think about what inclusive spaces really mean. So to us, the WSU Roar program has really started to open up these conversations and these spaces even more so than we thought before. And one of the things that, as I mentioned, is very important is that traditional college experience. And not only do they have these experiences right now, but they will continue to have that community living here in Pullman and probably beyond. So once they graduate, actually, some of them vote, and they take their responsibility as a citizen very, very seriously. So what they just want is a little bit more access and a little bit more inclusiveness. And so that's why we are here, to take that next step and move our students forward. And of course, they're the guidance of our program. We just help them out a little. So again, we thank you for having us here. This is our website and our Facebook page, our email. If anybody has any questions, we're happy to take them now.
Any question, comments?
Yes, Brad. Can community leaders, I mean, you mentioned being more open for employment and things like that, but what are some of the things that the community can do to, you know, better support this?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we try to encourage everybody is to spread the word. One of the biggest things and barriers, I think, is mindsets and really getting to open up your mind about, you know, the possibilities that these individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities can actually do. Have high expectations for them and then opening up opportunities for them, whether that's through parks and rec, that's through employment opportunities, housing, any transportation, things like that. I think for the most part, removing those barriers is probably one of the most important things that I believe any community member could do.
Yes?
I just want to say, as a past mentor and supervisor for someone with mental disability, this is awesome and really appreciate you coming to discuss it. It's very exciting. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thinking back to the governor's commission on individuals with disabilities.
Absolutely.
When they traveled out here and we did the community forum and then had feedback from the community, I just recall that this was, one of the major items of discussion was how to provide additional opportunities for people transitioning from high school to the workforce or to our community to be more involved in the community. And this is, I think, addressing that specific need that we heard from a lot of people within Pullman, but also in the broader area in Wimmin County, too. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And we try to build the program not just for, you know, people here within Pullman, right? We really thought about it, having in mind the entire Northwest. And that's why our program doesn't have out-of-state tuition as well because we know Idaho is right next door, right? So building a program that could benefit a larger community and really set precedence to what it could be for other universities and especially the one across the state with the purple colors. And we can really push forward with others around as well. So we're trying our best.
With all the campuses around the state, it looks like this is a good place for the pilot program to get going.
Absolutely.
And then you can go to Vancouver and Everett and all the other places and try cities.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they're willing to do that and they're wanting to do that. But I think Pullman is the perfect place, not just in regards to safety and inclusiveness, but the infrastructure and, you know, the small-town feel. Our students have felt very, very comfortable. And we have had great support from the fire department, the police department. Thankfully, they haven't had any issues. They were just asking me. But they're there just in case. So they've been great supporters of our program.
Thank you so much for your time, Mrs. [inaudible]. Thank you for letting us know, by the way. Appreciate it. Now we now move to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature, and the councils have a chance to look these over ahead of time. Do I hear a motion for title only?
So moved.
Moved in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 26, 2019, and approve them as submitted. A motion approving disbursements represented by accounts payable checks numbered 94887 through 95241 totaling $3,67,293. Payroll checks numbered 74286 through 74404 totaling $116,363.44. And electronic transfers totaling $1,537,771.27. A motion to approve a lodging tax grant to Pullman Arts Commission in an amount up to $10,000 for the Pullman Art Fest to be held May 16 through the 19, 2019. A motion to approve a lodging tax grant to Pullman Chamber of Commerce in an amount of up to $20,000 for the Field Fest 2019 to be held September 28, 2019. A motion to accept contract 17-02A Sidewalks 2017 as complete. Resolution number R-10-19, a resolution accepting waterline easements from Pullman Mob LLC, a Washington Limited Liability Company. Resolution number R-1119, a resolution accepting a sanitary sewer line easement from Pullman Mob LLC, a Washington Limited Liability Company. And resolution number R-12-19, a resolution accepting a waterline easement from SEL Development LLC.
Is there any item the council would like out for discussion?
I would like three and four out.
Three and four. Any others? And do I hear a motion to approve consent agenda items one, two, five, six, seven, and eight?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That, we go to item number three and four. Brandon?
Yeah, so I would just like to maybe defer these, if we can, just to have additional time to go through these, to review them, fully anticipating approving these, but just for additional time.
So for the next council meeting?
Yes.
Well, the next council meeting we're going to have is basically a workshop, because that'll be the April 2nd, be the one after that.
That's fine.
Okay.
If I could just make one comment, and that would have to do with the arts commission request, with the timeframe that they're looking at, with it being about six weeks out, that doesn't give them much time.
Yeah, so I'm familiar enough with Art Fest that that's fine.
Same one they've done earlier.
Yeah, we can go ahead and let's just approve that.
Okay, right now, let's take care of number three. Why don't you make a motion to approve that?
Yeah, well, I'd move to approve number three.
Okay. The lodging tax for $10,000, the Pullman Art Fest, to be held May 16th to 19th. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That, item number four doesn't hit until September.
Correct.
So.
That one's been deferred till later, is that what you're saying? Right. And I think, you know, in theory, it looks amazing. It's got music involved, so, you know. But I'd like to have just a little more time to review that.
And if I could just make one other comment on that. I see in future agendas, maybe it's our next meeting or two meetings, that Brittany Christian, who is the tourism director, is coming to give us a report. So maybe that item can go onto the agenda for that particular meeting, so she can also kind of enhance the information.
And I'm fine with that, but that would also give any of us additional time to follow up with you as the committee chair anyway, so, yeah.
That's the April 9th meeting.
Okay. There's no need for a motion, we just defer.
There is actually a need, a motion to defer it to April 9th.
You make the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to defer number four on our agenda, on the consent agenda to the April 9th.
Regular meeting.
Yeah, next regular meeting.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are now through the consent agenda. We now move to the regular agenda. The first item up tonight is the quest annexation. And with that, we go to our finding director, Pete Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. This proposal involves the annexation of approximately 165 acres of land located west of the intersection of Southwest Crestview Street and Sunnyside Drive. The property is pre-zoned, R1, single-family residential. Last December, council, you considered the applicant's notice of intent to annex this property, and at that time, you decided to accept the annexation and issued four instructions to the petitioners. Those were assumption of city indebtedness, acceptance of the pre-designated zoning classification, incorporation of the area into the hospital district, as Mr. Adams mentioned, and provision of an appropriate legal description of the property. You now have before you the applicant's petition for annexation. The applicants have acted in conformance with your instructions and everything else appears to be in order with respect to the petition. For example, this land is located within the city's urban growth area, where we anticipate growth of this nature. So staff is recommending approval of the proposal. Tonight's session is a public hearing, so the steps are to open the hearing for public comment and then separately adopt findings of fact and conclusions. Staff suggestions in that regard are attachment E to your staff report. And then finally, we ask that you act on the ordinance before you, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Questions to Pete on this? Okay. Now, this time, we open a public hearing. And just so you know, we take a public hearing, three-minute time limit. So anybody who would like to make any comments on this, please come up. And we also have a booklet up there that we need to have you sign in, so we at least have your name and address for the public record. So is there anyone who would like to make any comment on this quick? Please come up. You can, if you haven't signed in, you can sign in after you talk.
Okay.
And please identify yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Phyllis Erdman, and I live on the, right there next to that adjacent property, so on Sunnyside. I just want to make an observation that I just want assurance that that's going to continue to say is R1 zoning, because my past experience has been that that has changed rather rapidly. It originates as R1 zoning and then it changes rather quickly. So that's a very nice neighborhood. Of course, I hate to see the fields go away, but I understand development will happen. So I just encourage you to make sure that it continues to be R1 zoning. The other issue is just about water. I don't know where the water is coming from. We have very poor water pressure on our street, on Sunnyside anyway, so I don't know where the additional waterfall, more developments will come from.
Okay. We have two people that can answer those questions. You want to do the water flow first? Kevin?
Yeah, that's part of our southwest high-pressure zone, so we have two water tanks in that zone. And the water pressure is based on sort of the elevation of the property, not on the availability of water per se. And so it really kind of depends on the topography of where the developments are. If the developments are further down and lower in elevation, the pressure will increase. So it's just one of those things we look at as part of any subdivision plan review, what the minimum pressures are, and then if we need to plan for improvements, we do that, as well as part of our six-year water system plan update.
Pete, about the R1?
Ultimately, the city council decides on the zoning for any particular property within the city. As I mentioned, it is scheduled to come in as an R1 zoning designation, and there's certainly no plans to change that in the immediate future. And so we anticipate that it will remain that for the time being.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Nathan, you had a comment?
Yeah, just a comment. I know, Pete, I'm looking at the map and the contiguous, you know, designations are mixed, R2 and R1. So I just want to make sure that we're being completely, you know, forthright regarding it. There's no plans for R1, but the contiguous are mixed, R2 and R1. But no plans.
Exactly. Yes, the property to the north of the site that we're talking about today is zoned R2, but again.
No plans.
There's no plans to change the R1.
Any others who would like to make any comment on this? Going once. Any others? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Now, Pete, you had some recommendations for the council tonight, so do you have any further questions on this?
I don't. I did want to point you in the direction of attachment E with respect to findings of fact and conclusions.
That's the first thing we must adopt.
And if those look acceptable to you, then it would be appropriate to have a motion to adopt.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And the second part of that is the ordinance before you. Do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Would you read the ordinance? Laura?
Ordinance number 19-4, an ordinance annexing to the city of Pullman certain contiguous real property located west of the intersection of Southwest Crestview Street and Southwest Sunnyside Drive.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That, we now move on to item number two, resolution authorizing investment of the city of Pullman monies to the local government investment pool. And with us is our director of finance, Mike Urban.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Before I use a resolution tonight authorizing investment of monies for the city of Pullman to the local government investment pool operated by the Washington State Treasurer's Office. Since you saw a similar item like this back in February, this isn't a policy change nor a change in perspective, just an operational change within our office, removing signatures and adding myself and re-juggling a few things. So we recommend your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions on this? Okay. Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to approve resolution number R-13-19.
Do I hear a second? You want to read the resolution?
Resolution number R-13-19, a resolution authorizing investment of city of Pullman monies in the local government investment pool.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, council.
We hope all of them will be as smooth as that, Mike, in the future, especially when you give us our financial reports.
Item number three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Pullman and Palouse Design Associates. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Replacement of the library roof with a new membrane roof is included in the city's CIP Capital Improvement Program. Design funding for this project has been budgeted for in the library's 2019 budget. The majority of the existing roof was installed in 1992 and is at the end of its useful life. Over the past few winters, government building staff have patched numerous leaks in the roof. A professional services agreement has been negotiated with Palouse Design Associates for this project. They are considered somewhat of a local expert with respect to commercial roofing and have assisted the city on other roof replacement projects on city buildings and utility infrastructure. Architectural services will be performed on a cost reimbursable basis with a not-to-exceed amount of $28,000. This includes design bidding and construction administration services. Also included in the scope are electrical design services for roof drain heat tracing, which we currently have, but it's not, it's kind of jury-rated, so. Staff is recommending council authorize a professional services agreement with Palouse Design Associates for the library roof replacement project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions to Kevin on this? Seeing none, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt R-14-19?
Second.
Second.
Resolution number R-14-19, a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Pullman and Palouse Design Associates, P L L C, for library roof replacement project.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four is a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Pullman and Stan Tech Consulting Services for pavement rating condition assessment. Time for the class and the grading.
That's mouthful. Thank you, Mayor. In 2018, council adopted a strategic goal titled Strategic Planning/Dependable Infrastructure. Under this heading was an action item to research and discuss options for additional city street fund revenue. In order to support this goal, as well as assess and prioritize city resurfacing projects, staff included in the 2019 budget, a pavement rating condition assessment. This will provide a good foundation for discussing street funding needs and priorities. The objectives of the assessment are to assess all city streets according to a pavement condition index, PCI, which is a scale of zero to 100. The index conforms to standards regarding rating pavement conditions. The assessment will also include various budgeting scenarios such as utilize the existing budget, maintain a current pavement condition index, improve the network by five points, improve the network by a goal set by the city. The fieldwork is done by a high-tech van outfitted with cameras and roughness measuring equipment. The images are then processed in the office by trained staff. To select a consultant, staff solicited proposals from qualified firms. Four proposals were received and ranked by a selection committee of city staff. The firm selected is Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc. A professional services agreement has been negotiated with a not-to-exceed fee of $37,377. Staff is recommending council authorize a professional services agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions to Kevin? Nathan?
More of a comment. I think this is a great step forward. You know, we've discussed before the use of a needs-based assessment for streets, so I really appreciate you moving forward with this, and I think this is going to help us quite a bit, so, thank you.
Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Who do you want to give it to?
If I goes to Pat.
Give it to Pat. Would you like to read that one?
Resolution number R-15-19, a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Pullman and Stan Tech Consulting Services, Incorporated, for pavement rating condition assessment.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We continue with the Kevin Gardner Show tonight. And now we have a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Pullman and Design West Architects for the Garden House at Lawson Gardens project. Finally, we're getting to that one. That's great.
Thank you, Mayor. In 2011, council authorized a professional services agreement with Design West Architects to provide concept and schematic design services for the Garden House at Lawson Gardens project. Design West completed a schematic design report and architectural renderings in 2012, and I've included those in your council packet. Pullman voters approved Prop 1 in February of 2018. This bond measure authorized funding to complete design work and construct the garden house. The next step for this project is to complete design. The Lawson Gardens Committee and Park Superintendent have been involved in the process up to this point in time and are anticipated to remain so until its completion. The committee and city staff are pleased with Design West's work on the project so far and desire to continue with them. A professional services agreement has been negotiated with Design West for completion of architectural design, bidding and construction administration services for the project. Architectural services will be performed on a cost reimbursable basis with a not-to-exceed amount of $108,600. The total budget for completion of this project is $1.4 million, based on bond proceeds, $700,000 from bond proceeds, and the lodging tax construction grant, $700,000. The estimated completion date for design is October 31st of this year, with construction completion estimated for 2020, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions on this?
Ned Morikson, the audience tonight.
Sitting in the back row, we see him back there.
Do you have detailed questions about the design project?
Okay. Nathan?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't a council member right who kept this in front of us and...
Was that...
I'd like to take credit for that, but no.
We got the lodging tax money, and that was out there, so now you got to step up.
It was Alan who really was the main advocate for it. And without the passage of the proposition, the lodging tax piece of it would have sunsetted, because the Lawson Gardens Committee was charged with raising X amount of dollars as well. And so that wasn't going along as was originally thought that it might, so, but thank you for the recognition.
I give you credit, and of course, Alan. Well, yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, Alan really was the champion of it, so it's great. And I guess the only other comment that I would make, and of course, hindsight is always 2020, I wish that we'd had the foresight to have asked to have a working kitchen in there, having been to a number...
Ned took note, he's writing it down right now.
He's mentioning that. There is no other event center facility in town with a working kitchen, and it is just such a detriment to the catering services that try to provide, you know, food for different events, that if there's any way that, you know, anything like that can possibly be considered at this late date, that'd be awesome.
To commercial standards, that's exactly what they need out there, so that'd be wonderful.
Thank you, Ned.
Yeah. All right. Do I hear a motion on this?
So I have one question, Mayor. So maybe this is a question for Ned. The renderings are great. I've seen some of the other ones as well. I don't see any renderings of the restroom, and I know that this came up previously. Alan Davis had mentioned that it would be accessible from the outside.
Yes, please come up.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, what will those be like? Because there will be weddings here, too, so it had come up, whether the commodes would be these Alcatraz-style ones that we have in, you know.
You're giving a great visual here. This is, you know...
That's the cleanup.
I think your park restrooms are some of the best. The city playfield's one is one that I'm not afraid to go into. But with that said, we're going to have to walk a compromised line, because it will be the public restrooms for the, for Lawson Gardens on a day-in, day-out basis, and so they do have exterior access doors. How Alan chooses to unlock them and lock them and how we do that, we will look for durable and yet attractive materials to be able to do that. But they are included as a part of the building, so we will get public restrooms, but those restrooms will also double as being the dressing rooms for wedding events and things like that. So it is a design challenge to come up with something that's going to be Alcatraz-proof, but still look like something you'd want to have your wedding at.
Thank you.
And of course, we always have to watch...
Ned's classy, so I know.
Okay. Thank you. Now, do I hear a motion? I know we've had a lot of questions, so.
Would you like to see to the council member, right?
Move to adopt resolution number R-16-19?
Second.
Moved in second.
Resolution number R-16-19, a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Pullman and Design West Architects, P A, for Garden House at Lawson Gardens project.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now move to another area. Number six is going to have two resolutions tonight. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Incorporated communities in the state of Washington are required to have a solid waste management plan submitted and approved by the Department of Ecology. Whitman County has taken the lead for communities in this county by preparing a plan that communities can also adopt. In this way, communities can avoid the necessity of preparing their own individual plan. Whitman County has requested the city of Pullman execute the attached-in-or-local agreement for solid waste management planning. Recently, the county completed the solid waste management plan for the 2019-2024 planning period, which has been submitted to and reviewed by the Department of Ecology. This document is an update of the original plan adopted in 1997 and previously updated in 2005 and 2012. The 2019-2024 plan was developed with assistance from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, of which council member Eileen McCall is a member representing Pullman. And I didn't realize you would be here tonight, or I might have scheduled it for different council meetings, so my apologies on that. We do have Dave Nails here tonight, who's the Whitman County's Solid Waste and Recycling Director, in case you have questions.
We have Mr. Fincher from WSU. We've got everything covered here, so. Rick, I just thought it'd be really formal and that's okay.
It is appropriate that the city of Pullman now adopt the new plan in order to remain in compliance with state code, and I'm the staff member that was, you know, directed to bring this to council. My knowledge on this is somewhat limited, that's why I've asked Dave to be here tonight, so if you have any detailed questions.
Since Dave is here, do you want to have a shot at it, or just give us just a county version of it?
It's a healthy plan, and it takes some putting together. J U B Engineers helped us prepare this, $30,000. Luckily, we only have to do it every five years. There's lots of stuff in there as far as WSU's information, Pullman's information as far as recycling, so I can answer any questions that you may have on any of those?
Any questions? Any questions? I just figured since you have to sit through most of the meetings...
Yeah, I drove all the way here from Colfax, and you put me on the very last. I appreciate that. No, it's okay.
In regards to, well, I guess, you know, the recycling situation and waste, so can you give kind of an overview regarding it? Because this is, what, five years of worth of planning here, so can you kind of...
Yeah, so just the recycling part of it, is that what you're looking for?
Recycling, going into the waste, and so on. I know there's some challenges regarding this.
So I'll give you a little update on the waste. The waste was, I was able to put together an RFP and a contract for 2012. We switched providers. We had been with waste management for 20-plus years, and we decided to go with, out to bid, and we saved $20 a ton, which equaled about a half million dollars a year savings. It was big, and it was a 10-year contract. That's what pretty much funded the new solid waste transfer station. If any of you have been out to the site, it's Cougar colors. I picked those colors, so it was, it was a beautiful, it's beautiful. And we did have a fire not too long ago. We're back in business there. We do have spring cleanup coming up the 19th through the 27th for reduced rates of $35 a ton instead of $110. We are continuing to look at other options, and in this plan you would see that as well, that we continue to look at either trucking it down to Assotin County and having our waste put in their landfill, or developing our own landfill with property that we have out six miles to the north. Recycling is a challenge at this time, with China not taking any of the single stream. We went to single stream in around 2013, and it's a very nice convenience. However, it's very unmarketable, and we are struggling. I think right now we're around $148 a ton. I'm not sure what WSU's at. They market their own, but we're around $148 a ton to get rid of single stream recycling right now, so it's a costly endeavor. That's a small update for it.
Are there plans to get rid of, I mean, the single stream? I mean, what's the...
You know, it's hard to go back now. I don't see us doing that. I had looked at possibly bringing a mini Murph to Whitman County, to where we could bring in it, bring it in single stream, pull it back, because that's what they do. They pull it back apart and then market it that way. However, that's a, that's a hard deal as well, when the price is 148 to get rid of it. There's no incentive really to put a multimillion-dollar mini Murph at Whitman County. We have the room, and we have the building, and if the markets rebound, domestically, we need to see somebody doing that here in the, in the states, so if we could find...
I know on the East Coast they're doing it, so I keep waiting for them to come over here on the West Coast.
Right, you know, the West Coast was so, it was so easy to ship it to China, so hopefully we will see some productivity there.
Any other question?
No, as far as the county with WSU, if that's all right.
Yeah.
Okay. So I appreciate the input. With WSU, I'm wondering, I know switching...
Rick, do you want to make a comment?
I didn't know Rick was going to be here. It's nice to see her.
So at WSU, we're going to try to weather the storm. One of the things that, you know, the issue is with China, which was really 50% of the world market for the consumed recyclables, that door just shut and stopped. So what we're seeing here on the West Coast is stockpiles of material, some of which is valuable, that there is just no place to process it, and nobody's wanting to buy it. So what's happening nationwide is we're starting to see investment in infrastructure coming in from US companies, but also from even Chinese companies. A lot of monies coming in. Those companies, their businesses were hurt within their country, and, you know, due to the environmental regulations that they're trying to put forward there, they're, they're really having to exit the country, and so a lot of infrastructure is being developed in the United States. You know, my estimation is, is we're probably looking three to five years before markets adjust, and there is quite a glut on the market. You know, one of the issues is, is, you know, we all know how much material is shipped, or how much we're buying now on Amazon, you know, and stuff online, uses cardboard boxes. Even given that, the price of cardboard has dropped $140 a ton in the, in the last, oh, 18, 20 months, and, you know, and that is just because, you know, again, a market closed off, and so there is a glut of material, and it's going to take time to correct that. Like David said, we feel it's hard to go back. What we're doing, we're pushing very hard on, you know, messaging for clean recycling, try and help people identify what contamination is, because I think what we're going to see when, when things do turn around is there could be value in combing of recycling again in the future, as long as it is clean and usable, and, and that's an adjustment that our society is going to have to make, and so.
Empty, clean, and dry. That's what we're pushing, so. And, and back to the basics, your number one's plastic, number two, plastics, aluminum, tin, those still have good value, so.
Okay, I just threw all the glass in the garbage, so it had to be retrained, because I had that thing all down.
We do accept glass out at the facility, and we're going to continue to recycle glass the way we used to do it, which is pulverize it.
Crush it and using the grates.
That's correct. And we're one of the only counties that are doing that, so. Yeah, thanks.
Glad you guys could get together there. So now you have two resolutions. Let's take the first one, which is R-17-19. Do I hear a motion on that?
Move to adopt R-17-19.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Laura, do you want to read that one?
Resolution Number R-17-19, a resolution authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement between the City of Pullman and Whitman County for the purpose of solid waste management planning.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next resolution, R-18-19. Do I hear a motion on this one?
Move to adopt Resolution R-18-19.
Second.
Resolution Number R-18-19, a resolution adopting the 2019 to 2024 Whitman County's solid waste management plan within the jurisdiction of the City of Pullman.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just got to hand it to you, Laura. You're just, I mean, you've got everything.
I have a method.
Very impressed. Next comes item number seven, which is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services agreement between the City of Pullman and H D R. And we have with us Kara Haley, who is our new city engineer. We're very proud of that, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The action before you is an engineering services agreement with H D R Engineering for the Waste Activated Sledge Thickening Improvements Project at the wastewater treatment plant. The project is included in the city's capital improvement program, and it's also part of the city's approved 2016 facility plan. The overall goal of this project is to enhance thickening of the waste activated sledge coming from the secondary clarifiers. Under the current setup, waste activated, waste activated sledge is thickened in a dissolved air flotation tank, which we call the DAFT for short. The thickened sledge is collected off the top of the DAFT and then flows by gravity into an underground equalization tank, where it's temporarily stored and then pumped to the anaerobic digesters. The existing equalization tank is roughly 16 feet below grade, and because of this arrangement, and also thickened sledge is a lot harder to pump than more of a liquid would be, we have to basically dilute this thickened sledge inside of the equalization tank in order for the existing pump to function and basically get that thickened sledge to the digesters. This project proposes replacement of the existing DAFT with two new rotary drum thickeners. The rotary drum thickeners would be installed on an above-grade equipment access in the existing equipment building, and that would take place in the space presently occupied by the DAFT. Each would have a dedicated hopper and a new pumping unit installed directly below it, and that would be on the floor, the building floor level. These new pumps would pump the thickened sledge directly from the hoppers to the digestors, which would address some of the current pumping challenges that we have, and we'd basically completely bypass the equalization tank. An engineering services agreement has been negotiated with H D R for design of this project and also bidding and construction support services, to be performed on a cost reimbursable basis with a not-to-exceed amount of $277,430.30. Design services would be completed this year, allowing for construction of the project in 2020. It's the staff recommendation that Council adopt the provided resolution authorizing an engineering services agreement with H D R for this project, and I'd be happy to take any questions you guys might have.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt R-19-19.
Second.
Let's go for Dan. Dan was just about ready to tap one the last time.
Resolution Number R-19-19, a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering services agreement between the City of Pullman and H D R, Incorporated, for the purpose of designing the wastewater treatment plant, Waste Activated Sledge Thickening Improvements Project, and providing support services during bidding and construction.
Waste activated sledge thickening.
It's wordy.
It's one that really...
Rolls off your tongue.
Yeah, it really does. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Kara. Now comes certified local government grant application. Dr. Pete?
Thank you, Mayor. Part of the city's responsibility as a certified local government or CLG is to take inventory of historic properties in town. Each year, we're offered the opportunity to seek federal grant money for purposes like this through the state Historic Preservation Office. Since the city became a CLG back in 2011, we've been successful using this funding for two surveys, one on the southern portion of College Hill and the other in the downtown area. This year, the city's Historic Preservation Commission, or H B C, is proposing the next logical step in that inventory work, and that is a survey of properties in an area on College Hill that's bounded by Stadium Way on the north, Lake Street on the east, Colorado Street on the south, and B Street on the west. This is adjacent to the College Hill Historic District, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. The H B C believes this is an appropriate area for study due to the substantial number of historic resources there and because of development pressures in the area that sometimes result in a loss of those historic resources through demolition. The total cost of the project would be approximately $18,400, most of which would go towards the professional consultant services fee. There is no financial match for the city, although staff would contribute part of its time for this effort. If approved, the work would take place between February and August of next year. The planning department would provide notification to all property owners in the study area before the project begins, and there would be a public presentation at the end to discuss the results of the survey. As I mentioned in my memo, it is important to note that the purpose, the only purpose, really, of this survey is to provide information. There are no property classification changes involved, and property owners are always in control of the historic designation of their individual properties. So the action requested of you tonight is to discuss this matter and provide direction to staff. Deadline for submission of the application is April 26th, so if the council wishes to move forward on this proposal, staff will return at a subsequent council meeting with an appropriate resolution, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Questions?
I have two comments. Thank you for the clarification in here about owner consent. I know that has come up before, and I know it has also come up before regarding some of these grant, grants and the deadline being right up against us, and this is well in advance, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome. We're learning. Judging by this, since this is a discussion item, do you want to move forward and let them come up with the questions? So you got all the nods. Move forward, and we'll see you probably on the April 9th meeting, maybe?
I'm sure when it's scheduled.
Because April 2nd, we have the discussion with county commissioners on District Court.
I'd have to look at the schedule to be sure. It's sometime in the next three weeks.
Just want to make sure you get it done.
It's April 9th.
April 9th?
Yeah.
April 9th.
Perfect.
Just like I said, because I'm looking at the list of the tentative agenda, so. All right. Now, is there any new business to come before the consult tonight? Ned, you almost became new. Have to time it a little bit differently on that. Seeing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So...
Second.
Moving second. We're going to go for an.
That's fine.
And Nathan, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, our city council meeting is done. 8:25. Thank you.